Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in this business meeting, January 21st, 2016. I'd like to introduce Nancy Newton, our Deputy County Administrator, who is sitting in place of Mr. Crupp, who is doing a presentation to the City Council of Milwaukee on what counties do. Nancy will do the roll call.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Sniff?
Here.
Commissioner Bernard?
Chair Ledlow.
Here. Commissioner Schrader is excused and away from this particular meeting. Would all please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, no comma after the word nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a pretty short agenda here tonight, but one of the first things is a recognition. Nancy?
Thank you, Chair Ledlow. I would like to invite forward Dan Johnson and Evan Polk from our Department of Transportation and Development. They are here to recognize some of our county business leaders in sustainability. So, welcome, gentlemen. Thank you.
I'll also announce that after this, there'll be a photo op, certainly not with Dan Johnson in it, but...
We're hopeful.
Dan, I didn't mean it.
I've broken many a camera before. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, for the recommendation, it's Dan Johnson, Assistant Director of the Department of Transportation and Development, and it is a pleasure to be here this evening to introduce Evan Polk, member of our Department of Transportation and Development Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Program. And equally important, the presentation he'll be making to you this evening acknowledging the businesses within our community that are taking part in this revamped Business Certification Program, also known as Leaders in Sustainability. It's important to know that the Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Program provides hand-on assistance for almost 750 businesses annually. These are businesses of varying size, both large and small, varying market focuses, locally owned and global. And obviously, with that variety, a wide range of sector interests that they're trying to serve. The work of our Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Program continues to provide widespread and consistently positive interactions between Clackamas County and businesses in our community to achieve our mutual objectives of waste reduction in and around the community. And so with that, I'm going to, this painful introduction, and turn it over to Evan Polk so he can continue with this lovely presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, Commissioners. As Dan said, my name is Evan Polk, and I'm the Supervisor for the Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Program. We're very happy to be here today to recognize and celebrate 24 Clackamas County businesses and organizations that have demonstrated leadership through a variety of sustainable best practices. We thought it appropriate, just to start with a brief bit of background first, our assistance to businesses is always tailored to workplaces' needs. Although many just want a little help refreshing their recycling system or adjusting their garbage service, others want much more focused help, for example, to deal with a unique waste material. And often, these consultations end up identifying operational efficiencies or creative solutions, some of which can save a business thousands of dollars while keeping valuable materials in the market rather than in the landfill. Clackamas County and other local governments in the region have had a business recognition program of one sort or another for over 10 years. Historically, these focused on recognizing achievement for recycling and waste reduction. But last year, we consulted with businesses who encouraged us that the program should really reflect the increased interest in the private and nonprofit sector for a well-rounded approach to sustainable practices and leadership. Increasingly, businesses and other employers want to do more than recycle well. They seek assistance to excel in and be recognized for a variety of best practices. These practices conserve resources and reduce environmental impact, help businesses recruit and retain talent, mitigate risk, and attract new customers. Many of these practices also save money. Some businesses have formal corporate responsibility programs. Some want to be able to demonstrate to customers how they are helping to ensure that the freedom and quality of life that we enjoy today is available to future generations. Studies also show that corporations that prioritize responsible, sustainable operations and products outperform their peers. As the private sector changes, we're adapting too, in order to continue adding value. So, the revamped program, Leaders in Sustainability, certifies and recognizes businesses, nonprofits, and other workplaces that take additional steps to prevent waste, reduce energy and water use, use fewer toxic and more healthier or greener materials, and support employees and their community. Our assessment tool identifies more than 80 best practices focused on three areas of benefit: financial, environmental, and community. And we also intend that this program will help connect businesses that want to mentor or be mentored by other businesses. Since the program launched, 24 workplaces representing more than 2,000 employees have been certified, and we'd like to call them out now. Depending on their level of engagement, workplaces can be recognized at the certified level, or a silver or gold level. Those at the certified level include Lake Grove Car Wash and Sheer Creations. Those at the certified silver level include Danielson's Properties, Friends of Robinwood Station, Happy Rock Coffee Roasting Company, the Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce, Nicholas Dos, DMD, the Sandy Community Action Center, and Vandenberg Jewelers. Those at the gold level of certification include Babacahen Cafe, The Bike Gallery, Coffee Creek Correctional Facility, Dave's Killer Bread, General Sheet Metal, Gubanks Pub and Restaurant, The City of Happy Valley, Kira's Bake Shop, Mary's Woods, Microsoft Surface Hub, recently known, I think, as Perceptive Pixel, New Seasons Markets, Norris Beggs &amp; Simpson, Rockwell Collins, Tucci Ristorante, and Wishbone Home &amp; Design.
And don't forget Merrill Hurst University.
Yes, so a number of other organizations have almost completed the process, and we found it today that Merrill Hurst is not quite there.
It says on the list.
Those include Merrill Hurst, yeah, that was an error on our part. Some of the organizations that have almost completed the process include Merrill Hurst University, West Lynn Paper, Oeco, Sub-Zero Ice Cream and Yogurt, and Willamette View, just to name a few that are maybe here tonight. If those in the audience, if you're with one of the businesses or organizations that I mentioned, if you're representing them today, would you just mind standing up just briefly? Thank you. So, in a moment, we would ask those of you who stood up to be ready to come up for a photo, but first, we have asked just a few of these businesses to very briefly share their perspective. So with us today, if you'd come forward, starting, I think, just for the first two, Brian Hurley with Rockwell Collins, come on up and join us here if you'd like, and Penny Machinsky with West Lynn Paper. Brian, go ahead.
First of all, Rockwell Collins is an aerospace manufacturer. We make heads-up guidance systems and helmets for aircraft and fighter pilots, and we're located in Wilsonville, headquartered out of Iowa, and we have about 550 employees down in Wilsonville. So, Rockwell is a very ethical company, won a lot of awards each year for having high ethics, and so sustainability falls really nicely into that mission and goal that we have. And so, when we started looking into the assessment that the county provides, it really gave us kind of a bar that was higher than what we had set for ourselves. So it really created a gap in what we currently were doing for sustainability and where we needed to go. So, with the help of Julaine and the county being there every week or a couple of times a month to come talk to us and encourage us and answer questions was really beneficial for us to achieve this. So, really want to thank you guys for supporting that program and helping us kind of get our momentum forward to do bigger and better things.
Thank you.
Penny?
I'm Penny Machinsky. I'm with West Lynn Paper Company. I'm the Environmental Manager there. West Lynn Paper is a 126-year-old paper mill, definitely fall into the category of old industry. We're located basically in the middle of the Willamette Falls. A lot of people don't know we're still there after the Oregon City Mill closed, but we're still up and kicking. We have about 250 employees, do $19 million payroll a year, and about $250 million in sales to companies across North America primarily. Like many in our industry, we've had a long-time commitment to sustainability. We're high resource users, and recycling has been a part of the paper industry for as long as paper industry has been the paper industry. We've had water conservation and greenhouse gas emission goals in place for a decade. In fact, our goals were set with the 2015 deadline, so now we need to start new goals. Our water consumption at the end of 2014 was down 18% and greenhouse gas emissions down 24%. So we've made some really significant progress over the years. One of the things we're the most proud of this year is we got an $800,000 grant from the EPA to buy a bunch of new clean diesel trucks. We run shuttle trucks back and forth between here and Vancouver, and we anticipate that these trucks are going to not only, you know, improve our cost efficiency, but also dramatically reduce the fuel consumption, greenhouse gas emissions, and the air toxics associated with that truck fleet. Some of the reasons that we wanted to get involved in this program in particular, frankly, the public recognition, we have a lot of people that still know we're here and the good stuff that we're doing, and we just thought this would be a great opportunity to have our name out there. It helps us reinforce our values with our employees, and that's very important to us as well. And then, it also helps us expand our sustainability goals beyond our production line. We tend to get very focused on our product and the process, and this program kind of forces us to think about things that we would not normally be considering. So we're pleased to be a part of it and looking forward to completing our certification. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Penny.
Thank you.
Lastly, Joe Buck is the owner of Gubanks and Babacahen Restaurants.
Well, I haven't been to Rockwell Collins yet, nor have I really been through the paper mill, but I've been to your restaurant before.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair.
It was good stuff, don't get me wrong.
Yes, my name is Joe Buck. I own Gubanks in Babacahen, and honestly, when Shannon Martin with the county contacted me, I had to do a double take. I was so shocked that Clackamas County was behind the sustainability initiative, and I was so pleasantly surprised. My restaurants, we were already doing, you know, taking certain steps to be sustainable, but like most small businesses, I don't have a staff member dedicated to looking into these issues and staying on top of best practices. I mean, that, you know, falls on me. And going through, having this program in place really enabled me to just expand upon what we were already doing and hear about what other businesses are doing and to do an even better job at being sustainable. At, you know, Gubanks, we're kind of known for our soup, and we always have leftover soup, and as we make a new soup every day. And through this program, we're able to connect with St. Vincent de Paul, and now each week they come, and we're able to donate that leftover soup, and it goes to feed those in need, which is just fantastic. One added benefit is how much the employees, you know, love working for a business that has this certification. When we had the presentation at Lake Oswego City Hall and had the plaques and took them back to the restaurant, so everyone was just so thrilled, the employees more so than anyone else, and it's great to see. So I appreciate the county's dedication to the sustainability initiative and hope it continues into the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Pleasure.
So, most of the workplaces that were mentioned earlier have already been presented with a plaque at a prior event. However, we have two that just recently completed their applications that we'd like to give either a plaque or a temporary certificate to on the way to taking this picture briefly. So, would Julaine Potter with our staff come on up? She's the staff person that worked with these two businesses. The first one is Rockwell Collins. Brian, if you'd like to come back up. And the second is Microsoft Surface Hub.
I think when you come up, you gotta turn around to our photographer over there and get your picture.
All right, well, if you would remain up here. That concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
I want to say that the Coffee Creek Correctional Facility whom I'm involved with greatly is not in Clackamas County, but they have asked, they're on the periphery of our county, and they have asked for us to be involved, and I really appreciate that our department will step out of the county bounds in order to do that. And, so anybody on the periphery of Clackamas County, if your business wants this kind of service, give us a call. Commissioner Savis?
I just wanted to say that years ago, a couple decades ago, when I joined the Automotive Parts Rebuilders Association, we had initiative about recycling, and frankly, it was actually part of our program as far as rebuilding parts as opposed to manufacturing new parts to reduce the carbon footprint. So we adopted a lot of concepts way back in, I think it was the late 80s, early 90s, where we adopted that, and our whole program and so forth inside was about recycling everything that we used, the chips, everything we did. And it's really great. I mean, I just, you know, reflecting back on how much pride everyone's taken into this, I just want to congratulate everyone here for their efforts. It's just huge, and it's fascinating, I think, that, because there's cost savings of this, and there's obviously savings and environmental stewardship that's being displayed here, so I think that's huge. So, thank you.
Time for photo.
So, with those who stood up a moment ago, come on up. We'll squeeze in.
Test.
You and me, buddy, we're back here. We're right to the back.
What are you doing? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sorry, buddy, you're not back.
People in the back, people may need to crouch down a little bit.
This guy's tall. Please, Evan. Trish will take care of it.
That looks pretty good. There you go, there you go. One more. Keep smiling. Perfect, thank you.
As Commissioner Savis said, again, thank you, everybody, and congratulations for doing your part in becoming gold certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Usually, we try to put that on the front, but some of these presentations that we think are very important to encourage others and also to recognize those who really need same. So I'm going to call you up in twos, and initially, it would be Charles Ornby, known as Skip, and Charles Stewart, followed by Jose Harenandez and Jim B. from Vancouver. Yeah. Well, Charles, the other Charles, we got two Charles, maybe? We're negotiating. What's the plan?
Jim B. wants to donate his time to the university.
You know, I'm pretty liberal, and we'll see if we can add a minute or two for this gentleman, but I'll do the same for everybody.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Charles Ornsby. I go by the nickname Skip. I'm co-chair of the Birds Hill CPO NA. We're on the northeast quadrant of Lake Oswego. We abut and the Willamette River, River Mile 20. I'm here tonight representing my neighborhood. We have about three basic issues that are coming forward and have evolved over the last three weeks. First and foremost and primary issue is the evolution of the Tulloger Boulevard Sewer Project. This project will close down 8,000 feet of Tulloger Boulevard, which is a portion of a county road, for nine to 12 months. So access from the east end of Lake Oswego via Highway 43 to Lewis &amp; Clark College will be arduous at best. You're looking at 30-minute, minute-to-and-four-mile detours. I've given quite a bit of maps on that and whatnot over the last two, three weeks. Our primary issue with that tonight, and the primary concern which got me down here with my mother, who's a 63-year resident of Birds Hill CPO NA, is that the traffic pattern will devolve back to circa 1958 and before. To get to Lake Oswego, we have to go into Multnomah County, and to do that, we have to use Glen Road, which is essentially a mess. It's impassable to trucks, vehicles, barely even passable to my brother's Dobermans. So we've got about 200 households that'll be utilizing this. We need it cleaned up before a spadeful of dirt is cut in Clackamas County on Tulloger Then the other item that drove me here today is the, it's a complex issue. It deals with surface water management and environmental issues in Lake Oswego. I urge Clackamas County to make sure that, since it's, Clackamas County and about nine other communities are co-permittees on the, what's referred to as the NPDES, permits for surface water discharge into the Willamette River, that you find out exactly what precedence City of Lake Oswego staff may be setting in their documents, in their four documents, the TMDL Plan, which really didn't get much of public vetting, the SENSIVE Lands Program, and the current Surface Water Manual, which is coming up for a public hearing in early February, and the Tree Code. I'm scared stiff, especially the Surface Water Manual, especially in our area, especially in the transition between households in Clackamas County as they become part of Lake Oswego. Infusion of surface water into the ground in our area is risky, in my opinion. You've got slide zones, unknown quality of earth, and everything else. You have had problems with the Clackamas County courthouse, and that's why it's moving up to red soils because of that. So...
Go ahead, Skip.
Yeah. Also, this is tied into Waters of the United States, which I thank you very much for your letter in 2014 October in opposition of that. Again, this is a huge cost driver. Nobody realizes it for permitting ditches, mud puddles, and everything else in the county. I understand, Jim, you just said you're now, was it, an urban periphery farmer?
Ranger.
So, you're becoming, and I cannot thank the commission's unanimous support of that letter in 2014 October, and especially with the recent vote of Oregon, US Oregon Senate, House of Representative Member Kurt Schrader on Senate Joint Resolution 24 about two weeks ago, which was vetoed by President Obama about three days ago. We are only hanging by a thread on this matter for huge cost imposition on communities and ultimately on each and every individual tax and fee payer in Clackamas County, not to mention the rest of the state and everything else. For what benefit? I don't know. So...
I want to tell you that, give you a contact person, and that would be Mike Besner in our Engineering Department in regards to the road issues. Now, remember that you're right, there's multiple jurisdictions here, but he will turn you on to the right person for the surface water, which would probably be Water Environmental Services on that. But you're worthy of an answer to some of these things, which we don't know necessarily the technicalities of same. So, you're welcome to give Mike a call and tell him to chair, and I'm sure he'll take care of you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. And one of the maps I put out, I didn't realize the import of it, and it's getting more difficult as I see it. I have to make, there's one map I haven't made yet, or comparative map, and that's a, you better know your, if you have a piece of a tax lot in Clackamas County, you better know your quadrangle maps on which it sits, and you better know the streams and the abbreviations of that.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Your comments are well-taken on the Waters of the US and about the NIPS permit into the discharge. The Association of Oregon Counties of which were members, and we attend, I'm on the Water Committee, not because of my great knowledge of these subjects, so that I can learn something, but both the AOC and then the National Organization of, National Association of Counties have been opposition to what the EPA is trying to do with water discharge. And it's to the point, just so people understand, even a ditch, if you have a ditch running along your driveway on your farm, that's considered, believe it or not, navigable water and subject to all kinds of regulation. So it's extremely onerous, it's a terrible, terrible law, and it's too bad President Obama...
It's the amount of, we've lived in, my mother's lived in our house for 63 years, the amount of knowledge that a homeowner has to have or gain about where they stand and what watershed connected to what is, it's gone asymptotic. I mean, it's just like trying to climb up Yosemite, and they're criminalizing property ownership, property administration, and transfer property, and nobody realizes it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skip.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Charles Stewart, hi. Yesterday or today, I mailed out documents to most of you. I was wondering if you all received them? I've got a few extra copies.
Yes, we got them.
You got them? Okay, very good.
Move that microphone a little closer.
Sure, sure, thank you. Is that good? Okay, there, I can hear it. I'm really glad to be here and see y'all. Sorry, Commissioner is not with us. Constitutional history for Oregon and Clackamas County is recognized in statute that at some point in the past, Clackamas County was previously a county court, but it had been converted to the county commissioners' form of governing, and that's the incarnation you all are presently functioning under. But at the same time, statutes recognize that the duties of the county court have been transferred to the county commissioners, and I'd like to invite Attorney Madkur to also, we've talked a little bit about these issues before too, and I hope any of you will feel free to correct me if I err in anything that I'm saying here. But, yes, the duties of the county court were transferred to the commissioners, statutes recognize, I believe, and that tends to indicate that things like, another statute would indicate that, how the county court should be functioning, tends to indicate that judicial business will be prioritized over normal civil municipal county business, and that means that things like discussions like this concerning the administration of justice, they should take precedence over all other concerns, because remember, in our constitutional system, justice is prioritized right at the top in the preamble of state and national constitutions, and the whole plan of federalism is engineered around the decentralization of the judicial power. Okay? Down to local communities, that was the original plan. In New England, that's how the counties are organized into smaller townships and precincts, and they have their own judges, or at least in times past. And Oregon statutes and constitution still recognize that... and constitution still recognize that justices of the peace have judicial functions and that justices of the peace can work in every precinct. There's references that link the precincts. There's like 120 precincts in Clackamas County, and those have judicial powers. I believe an argument can be made solidly for that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. To dovetail into the nature of the emergency, the circuit courts that have assumed the duties of the administration of justice and thereby freeing you to focus on civil municipal governing duties, those, the judges in the civil municipal courts, I believe we can prove by due process of law that they're under the influence, that they're being coerced by a powerfully organized criminal syndicate, yes, that is aborting, obstructing the rights of the people to access those courts in the open manners described in Article I, Section 10 of Oregon's Constitution, which you all have taken an oath to uphold. Okay, see, the administration of justice in open and public manners is constitutionally prioritized, and it's not being followed, and things like the water problems and things like that. A lot of these problems, I dare say all of them, can be remedied if proper administration of justice is being followed. But unfortunately, there's powerful dark interests in this world. You witnessed the war in Iraq and the terrorism and everything. There is evil on this planet, and I dare say it's influencing the judiciary in Clackamas County in unlawful manners. The whole conflict in Harney County right now, you know, there's serious ideological differences of opinion, and somebody, somebody's in error in their interpretation of law, and due process of law decides which person is in error and which person is righteous and deserves the lawful judicial remedy. And I believe, especially yourself, Commissioner Ludlow, I believe you have duties of the county chair to act as the judge of Clackamas County. I believe that's, I think I touched on that with Attorney Madcor, Madcor, pardon me. And so the onus, I believe, devolves to you, and there's also the issue of a modest economic donation that we've included in our documents here.
$2 billion. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I do, I do hope that the merits of the legal issues involved therein are taken seriously.
Okay. I've given you a lot of extra time, Charles, and I appreciate that. You know, I, after reading not all, but some of what you sent out, including the check for $2 billion that I couldn't find a routing code on it, or by golly, I would have hammered it by now. But I read some of that, and it seems like you do know your constitution. However, I have discussed this with Mr. Madcor. He feels rather certain that the presiding judge down on Main Street in Oregon City actually administers justice, and he has certainly passed that around to his other judges, and their DA down there too, and they do their job, and our job is completely separate of that. And I don't believe that, I think you said in there that I could be discharged for office for not paying attention to what you were doing. I've actually got my doubts about that. But we have to rely on our legal advice, and we should, because we pay for it and we need it. And thus far, I think we've been operating as a county as the way we should, and I don't think we have some of the license that you claim in your documents that we do have. Commissioner, yeah, Savas, sorry. I'm just labeled here.
Yeah. I don't have a red light today. I got a blue light.
Yeah.
Thank you, Charles, for your comments today, and I appreciate the phone call. You called me about a week or two ago. We had a conversation, and I followed up with Mr. Madcor and in turn had him on my behalf send you email citing the statute 3.130, which, back when that was passed, conveyed the judicial jurisdiction and authority and powers to the judicial system and away from the county. And it was cited in that legislation, which counties, Baker County, Clackamas County, Columbia, Coos, Douglas, Jackson, Josephine, Klamath, Lake, Lane, Marion, and Tillamook. And there are counties out there today that still have the old system and actually have, the chair of the commission in some of those counties is a judge.
Yeah.
And they actually go and they are schooled and learn and actually decide cases.
They won't let me do that.
I did get your packet today. I came in my office this afternoon and saw your thick packet, and I've read a lot of your stuff. I haven't read all of it, and I haven't read the packet that I got in the mail today, but I will read that. But I would, you know, if there's a case, in essence, or standing of an example of a county in which your argument has been successful, I'd sure like to know it. But I would say that if you're trying to make that case, that any county cited in subsection A, other than those counties, would maybe be the ideal place to make your case as opposed to Clackamas because of that specific citing. So I will, again, I'll read your material and see if I can follow all of that, and I'll, again, I'll consult with Mr. Madcor as to what the emergency claim is, and try to understand it as best I can. I mean, I believe we all want to follow the Constitution. We all want to do. We think our responsibility is. So I don't think there's any effort on our part to subvert any kind of justice or anything like that. So I will, again, I will, I will study it even further. But if you can cite someone or something or some county where that example's been played out, or somewhere in the nation where that's been played out, I'd appreciate it, some examples.
I, I'll do my best. This is quite innovative from what is fashionable, and I don't think, to be honest with you, that there's many others that are moving in this direction. But I believe it's a necessity. The economic situation in the country and things are in precarious situations, and we need to look at all the options. And in pursuit thereof, just briefly, I'd like to know if possible, is the entity of the county court for Clackamas County, is that in existence, or is that completely gone?
Justice Court. I'm going to let Mr. Madcor answer that one.
Mr. Madcor?
Yes. It's been abolished by the statute that Commissioner Savas referred to as ORS 3.130.
130.
130, correct. It's, our judicial function is vested with the circuit court. The legislative and executive function is vested with the governing body, which is the form of county commissioners.
So you all are not claiming any judicial authority whatsoever, then?
I think we can unanimously agree with that.
Okay. At that point, it looks like the office of county judge is vacant. Is that correct?
The office of county judge is vacant?
Yes.
Mr. Madcor?
I don't believe we have a position of county judge. We have county commissioners. That's what I'm trying to convey. We have circuit court judges, and we have county commissioners.
Can you comment, with all due respect, sir, on the statute that indicates that the duties of the county judge and the county court have been transferred to the commissioners?
Again, that's the ORS 3.130, and I've cited that to you in the past, Mr. Stewart, as well.
You know, there's an exemption in that citation there. I believe I responded by email there. I don't think you addressed the issue of the exemption and whether or not that causes the judicial power to still be vested with the commissioners, as the other part of the statute say?
I'm not aware of the exemption.
I responded to you in email two days ago.
Charles, I'm not going to let a back and forth continue to occur with our county council, but I will tell you that I believe, and I believe the commissioners will back me up on this, we are not qualified for, and we do not want to be, act as judges. Now, we have a tough enough time doing what we do without adding that to our list. So we're very fine with the way it functions currently, and we feel it's backed up in law. So if you, if, like Paul said, Commissioner Savas, if you found where this has worked somewhere else, we'd be very interested in how that all came to be. But we're going to continue going on like we've been doing for 100 years plus.
If you're not interested in the quality of justice in this county, then the people have the right to displace, to replace with people that are concerned about administration of justice.
And that happens every time we go up for election, Charles.
That's not judicial process, sir.
Well, no, that's probably the most pure process. It's when people get to vote for us or not.
People are supposed to be voting in their constitutional precincts, and those have been neglected. They've been take over, taken over by the polarity between the Democratic and Republican Party. There's supposed to be consensus at the precinct level, and instead of that polarity through the Democrats and Republicans that's dividing and conquering our people, sir.
You're entitled to your opinion, and you've stated it very well. Thank you.
Yes.
And now I'll call forward Jose Hernandez, and Jim B., you can come up and talk, because I gave him a, I give everybody a few more minutes. Come up, Jose. Jim B., do you want to talk still? You're welcome to. I'm giving, I'm liberal tonight because we don't have much of a long meeting anyway, so we prefer hearing from our citizens for a little longer.
Please, sir, don't, don't call yourself a liberal. I wouldn't.
Who's that?
Don't call yourself a liberal. I would not.
Did I?
You just said you're liberal.
Okay, the chair doesn't get to decide time in a liberal way, because it's labeled. But yeah, go ahead. All right. Either one of you can start.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak once again on the same subject. I'm talking about that tax exemption for disabled veterans. Last time I came here was the 29th of October, and I left believing that someone from the commission was going to go and take the issue to the legislators in Salem. Before the meeting, I spoke to Commissioner Bernard, and he indicated that the reason that it hasn't occurred is because the legislature has been off and hasn't yet begun again. So I appreciate knowing that, but I still think that we have to pursue the subject. I have been paying taxes, full taxes, for over 45 years. And three, I'm on my third property here in Oregon. I thought I would go in and speak to the tax office regarding the, my qualifications to apply for it, and they looked at it, and it says, well, you're already enrolled, so you don't have to apply. But I realized later that, yes, I am considered an eligible veteran, but I'm not receiving the 100% disability reimbursement that was originally passed, and that's what I'm pursuing. Another problem, and I think perhaps I'm requesting that you folk look into it, is that the application that exists right now limits the retroactive reimbursement to only three years. And I believe that those of us who qualified since the beginning of the time that we started paying taxes should be reimbursed for the entire period, because we've been getting recognized for only 15%. And that's all I wanted to come out here and make my expression, because it's been almost, in another week, in a day, it's going to be three months since my last meeting, and I still have not heard what has transpired from here to Salem.
Excuse me. We are going to have some comments on that, if you'll just hold on. So we'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for coming and talking to us about this. We're very aware of your concerns and concerns of other veterans on the property tax exemption issue. And as you know, as county commissioners, we don't make the decision. The Oregon State Legislature does, and it will convene on February 4th, is that right, of this year? And we have asked the state association, the Association of Oregon Counties, to work on a bill to give tax exemptions to veterans. And so it will be in the Veterans Committee in Salem, and you can go online and look it up. And if you and other veterans see fit to go down to Salem and testify during the public testimony portion of the hearing, it would do very well for your case. And we have sent letters of support, and we have pushed this issue as much as we can right now. But you have our full support. We're going to see what we can do to make it happen. And, but if you want to talk to more people about it who have the lawmaking authority, that would be the place for you to go.
I appreciate that. I didn't know about it. A concern that I have, and I used to be very involved politically, as I mentioned before, I have been vice chair and chair of the Clackamas County Democrats, on a number of issues that I have tried to get assistance from not only the commission, but also some of our legislators, senators, and representatives, and congressional representatives. And I don't seem to get any results from them either. So to be honest with you, and as we started our discussion, I'm considering, not that I will, but I am considering maybe disbanding from the politics, the recognized parties, and become a liberal.
Well...
No. No, please.
If I can follow. So you're represented by Senator Allen Olson and either Representative Barton or Representative Kenner. If you would contact their offices and ask them when that bill comes up, I think if you ask people directly, you would have better response. And they can tell you when to go to Salem when these bills are going to come up.
We can do a little bit better than that, I think. We can actually, we have this information. And we can have our Public and Government Affairs Group call you, because I think you'd be a great witness. We could have our Public and Government Affairs Group contact you when your testimony is most important in Salem. So we can keep you abreast of the issue as it goes through. But understand, this is a short legislative session. Each legislator only gets two bills to submit. Now, normally, they put in a plethora of bills, spaghetti against the wall. But we can actually contact you when it's most important, and we can actually hook you up with the phone numbers of the particular legislator and senator that Commissioner Smith was talking about. So we don't expect you to go down there without any information. We can hook you up.
I would appreciate hearing from you folks or from whoever is going to contact me, but I, it would be better to receive an email. I've given you my email. Because of my hearing, I can't hear the results.
Sure. We can do that, Jose.
Appreciate that.
But you've been an advocate. You've been here multiple times. Some of us know of your disability, and it is severe, and we think it's a travesty, because we're big veteran supporters regardless of what some people may say. We're big veteran supporters, especially the disabled veterans. They need a real reward for that. And we talk about education, and we talk about housing when they're in real trouble, but this is when they've done okay, they own a house, and they're not being rewarded for their service. That's kind of how we feel. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to just build on what Commissioner Smith and Ludlow just shared with you, Jose. And I think that your testimony to us in the past was exceptional. It was very effective.
Thank you.
And as a result of that, we've added it to our legislative agenda as a priority. So it's in our legislative agenda. In November, we had our AOC conference, which, in which we, I sat in on the Veterans Committee and made sure that the group heard that. And I do also know that Representative Parrish, Julie Parrish, is, takes on a lot of veterans' issues. So we're committed to that. And again, the legislative session starts, as Commissioner Smith said, on February 6th, and we hope to get some traction on that and see what we can move. And her idea was great, to have you testify, we'll contact you in front of the, if there is, if there is hopefully, a hearing. I think you'd be very effective, and I just encourage you to bring that forward, and I applaud you for your efforts.
Right now, I have a VA appointment on the 4th, but I, on the 6th, I'm free, and I would be willing to testify.
I don't know if that's a testimony date. We're just saying that the legislative session starts on the 6th, I believe. Is that correct, Tudy?
Uh, yeah.
It lasts for 35 days, is it, you guys?
Yeah.
So who knows when it will be, but we'll keep you abreast of it, okay? Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
Now, I am liberal in a lot of ways. Ask our commissioners here, and social issues and vulnerable citizens, I guarantee, I'm probably more liberal than some of my friends would like to admit. Oh, my gosh, Jose, don't show anybody that. Bert's looking at it. Joe, you got to get going, sir. Joe? Joe, it's time to go. You have time to talk.
Yes, connect afterwards, please.
Okay. Thank you. I've got some important things I've got to talk with him about after hearing what just took place. Anyway, I want to say thank you for the way that you're conducting the meetings tonight so far. It's refreshing to see... It's refreshing to see, uh, a commissioner's meeting, or a city council, or that type of thing, where there's actually some interaction, some response, and, uh, some comments from your side of the bench, as it were. And I don't see that over on the Vancouver side of the river, unfortunately. We just don't have that. We get no answers from your side of the bench over there, and, uh, it's, it's nice to have a definite difference there. But, um, I want to ask you that, please, regardless of what you hear or see, please don't take the first, uh, just like if you go to the doctor, don't take the first opinion of that doctor. Remember, they're practicing too. You know, they practice law, they practice medicine. And, "Oh, here, try this and see how that works. If that doesn't work, you know, uh, try something else." Well, get a second opinion if you're not a hundred percent certain, regardless of what it is, uh, and especially in matters of law that are affecting the public at large. And remember, that's affecting every one of us, you guys too. So, uh, whatever's presented to you, and whatever your staff members, uh, might present back to you as a result of doing their research, don't just accept it as fact, because it's not always a hundred percent. You need to look into things yourself as much as you can. I know it's a huge job. I know there's never enough time to read all the stuff that you get, and, and to do all the investigative, uh, legwork and all this to really find out what the whole truth is, but things need to be done. And when you pick up something down the road, you know, six months later, three months later, whatever the case might be, you say, "Hey, wait a minute. That's different from what we were looking at back then. Which, which one of these is correct?" The local papers here, the Borghonian and the Columbian, they will put something in the paper, and they will marginalize people with terms like, uh, anti-government, or constitutionalist, or militia, or one thing or another, when there's actually nothing wrong with anybody who is a constitutionalist. Means pro-American to me, pro-government, uh, or, uh, militia. Militia is a lawful group of citizens assembled to assist the sheriff in, uh, enforcing the law in that county. That's what the militia is. And we've got, uh, no follow-up on the articles that are put in to the papers. They don't research any of the claims by the people who they're marginalizing to see if there's any legitimacy to what they're saying, and there's never any follow-up. They never do any, any investigative research on their own. If you look in a paper, look at who, who writes the article. It says Colombian staff writer, you know, Borghonian staff writer. They don't have any reporters anymore. The difference between a reporter and a writer is obvious. A writer uses lots of flowery language, adjectives and such. A reporter reports the facts. You know, there's a difference between the way Jack Webb talked and the way, uh, they talk on The View, or whatever that show is. Uh, there's facts, and then there's talk. And we need to find out what are the facts. And if the first party you talk to isn't a hundred percent certain about how to process that, that, uh, financial document you received, I'll just refer to it that way, then, uh, let's go to the next step. I think the, uh, document, as I read through it real quick, pretty much made it clear, step by step, how to deal with it. You know, present it here, present it there. And they know how to deal with that at the banks. That's what they do. You know, they reasonably should, anyway. And, uh, that's about it, anyway. I thank you for, uh...
It is often said that nothing ever changes unless somebody disagrees. So that document is full of disagreement, and, uh, some people disagree, and as you've proven, some people who agree with Saint. So I appreciate you coming forward and testifying.
And I want to say again, I appreciate you giving me, me the time after I gave my time to Mr. Stewart.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much. That speaks volumes.
I think that's one of the hallmarks of this particular commission, that, uh, after witnessing frankly what's happened in previous, uh, people's years here, is that we really encourage people to come, and then we will interact with them. We don't condemn them. We may try to correct them if they have something wrong, we, if we have the proof we want to show that to them. But we appreciate people taking their time to come here, and we definitely want to compliment them for that and treat them with great respect, and I hope you feel that way.
Thank you. I do.
Uh, John?
Oh.
Hit my light on.
Oh, I couldn't see it.
Your cups blocking light.
Commissioner Savis.
I just want to just say, Joe, I appreciate your, your most early comment, um, when you were speaking about, you know, looking into things yourselves. So I encourage you, like I did when, uh, Mr. Madcor indicated and cited that, that citing three point one three zero and all the other statutes that go along with that. I went on the web and, and looked for that information and found it, and I also, again, read the whole language while your testimony here, and, and read the exception that was pointed out by Mr. Stewart, and, you know, I can ask a friend of mine who's an attorney to also take another read at it, but I, I think, I, I think the, the response from Mr. Madcor by this citing is valid, so I don't question that, but I'll have someone else look at it. But I'm curious, though, if you could, in, in five words or less, or ten words or less, tell me what problem is it we're trying to fix?
That's not possible, sir. There's a myriad of problems.
Okay.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm certain that you know of a, a number of them, um, and, uh, more specific than I do, because you're here in this county, and I'm not. Uh, I have a couple of friends in this county. Mr. Stewart happens to be one of them. And, uh, so I hear things, and I've seen a few things at the courthouse and whatnot. And, uh, then too, uh, we have something that the Supreme Court of this state has said about eight years ago that they would, uh, give an answer to in about three months after a hearing that they had at, uh, Lewis and Clark College, the, which I attended. And that was, that they were going to address the issue of Oregon's Article VII as amended. Where an irrelevant part had said, and I quote, "The courts of this state shall consist of a supreme court and such other courts as may be created by the legislature," period. Since that point in time, there have been zero courts created by the legislature that I've been made aware of. So arguably, every quote "court," unquote, in this state, every decision by them, with the sole exception of the Supreme Court, since that Article VII is amended, is arguably null and void. Now, there's something that they don't want to answer. That's why it's been about eight years, and they haven't answered it yet.
All right. Thank you.
There's a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, a gentleman, Mr. Les Poole, who is known to finish so punctually, right on the end of three minutes, and I'm sure he invites the, uh, this temporary suspension of the three-minute rule, and I'm sure he'll tell us a lot during that time.
All right. Thank you for that warning that I shouldn't be up here for fifteen minutes. And, uh, in spite of what word one uses, liberal or otherwise, um, I think it's great that the gentleman that just spoke complimented on the decorum here and the interaction we have, and, uh, we all know it wasn't always like that. And, uh, there's a name I bring up from time to time, an associate of mine that paid a pretty good price to, to make that happen, and it only took a handful of citizens to change the interaction and communication and the decorum here. And this is a place where people are gonna come to you with so many different things, and you're trying to wear so many hats, uh, and they think that you're in charge of everything. I live in Gladstone, you're supposed to be fixing my Gladstone streets, right, on the county residence, so people, people come to you with these things, and unlike in the past, if you don't have an answer, you're, you're letting them know that, or you're trying to at least point them in a better direction, and, uh, that's real important. And, of course, the gentleman that I was referring to, uh, was a business owner that had some problems with the county and was, uh, sent out the door here in a rather bizarre fashion one day. Skip was here earlier from Birdsville CPA. Skip does amazing research. I've seen some of his documents, and all I can say is he's a brainiac, and when he brings something to you, it's usually well-researched and a worthy issue, and, and I'm not privy to that, what's going on there fully, but I'm very concerned about the definition of what navigable waters is. They've been stretching that a long time. I want Jose to know that I will, I'm here to volunteer to drive him to Salem, and I'll testify with him. If you could get that to him, I don't have his information, but by all means, because like it or not, I'll end up in Salem sooner or later in this session. The, the subject I had on my mind, and this is a good one, because this is county business. I know I'm at the right place. That is the roads, transportation. We just saw that Metro's not gonna expand the growth boundary. Gas is cheap, the economy's better, the truckers can't get anywhere, the ports pretty much shut down. Two oh five, as we all know, is getting worse and worse and worse. There's been no effort to, to come up with a bridge solution yet, and the CRC certainly went nowhere, so transportation's a real big issue. And when it comes to local roads, not the freeways, we really need to hear, "What are your thoughts? Where are we at with fixing the roads? Is something gonna be on the ballot maybe in November? Where are we at?" I sure appreciate comments. I'm getting inquiries from citizens and folks, and that's an issue that we've just got to address. And I somehow got that done in three minutes and three seconds. Thank you.
You've got more, I know. Are you, you done?
I am done, and, and again, I'm more looking for, you know, feedback. In the right situation, a road fee could be, uh, acceptable to a lot of people like myself that tend to vote against tax increases, uh, but I don't vote against them all. And if, and if the citizens really know what they're gonna get for their money, and understand how bad the roads are, and what it's gonna cost to fix them if we don't do something now, uh, I think it's really gonna help. So now we're at the end of the meeting, any comments on that would be great, and thank you.
Well, I'll make the following comments. We, uh, this week, we went over, um, the plan for yet another kind of a road ahead. And we've been doing this for two years, trying to educate the population about where our roads are. There were seventeen and a half million dollars a year down on maintenance, not building, maintenance, and it's only getting worse. So the question is, how far do you let it go down, to where you're grinding up roads? And how should we, um, propose something, uh, to be passed that would alleviate that problem? Now, the current look is at a vehicle registration fee of twenty-five dollars. Now, that will garner us around five million dollars, and the city's about three and a half million dollars. Now, the city's, if you saw the list, it's quite remarkable how much money they would get, but it'd be five million dollars in our particular case. Now, Commissioner Smith said early and often that she wanted a sunset on this, and we agree. So this particular proposal is for a seven-year sunset, and, uh, it would be for twenty-five dollars, as I said, and its specificity is really remarkable, because we've tried to touch every portion of the county by saying we will do this in incremental stages, like a CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and improve all the following roads, which, as arterials mainly, uh, they really function important, as an important, um, transportation need here in the county. Now, what this polling will do, then, is simply say, you know, "Do you support," now this hasn't happened yet, "do you support this, this program, and it's a specific, and it's got an end to it? Do you support that, and would you support the twenty-five-dollar vehicle registration fee?" We'll probably take out some farm vehicles out of that, but that's the current look that we, that we looked at, and we approved the marketing program, the finishing up the marketing program of a road ahead, so that we could ask people, you know, what they thought of that particular plan, which is the most comprehensive that we've been able to bring forward on this issue. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah. Well, um, this afternoon, during the, uh, the swearing-in of some new deputies and, um, promotions within the Sheriff's Department, and got a contact and a voicemail I was trying to make out, but, long story short, um, we had a couple reporters in the room Tuesday when this was discussed, and it was, um, suggested that, uh, you mentioned a, a vote, and it was suggested that, uh, perhaps we should vote five-zero to not put it to a vote and implement the twenty-five-dollar-a-year fee, which should be fifty dollars on the registration. And, uh, my comments at the time, unbeknownst to me, there were two reporters in the room, but, you know, I stand by what I said. You know, my concern was, is that, um, you know, we made a lot of commitments in the last two, three, four years. I made them for the last five years, matter of fact, after the May election, when the Sellwood Bridge was overturned, I made a plea to, uh, a group of people that were successful actually, um, with that measure, um, overturning the commissioner's desire to fund five-dollar registration fee. And I asked them, you know, "We've got a road problem. We need some roads that need to be repaired. I need your help, and, you know, what can we do to get your confidence in, in, uh, in, in support for some, for road maintenance, money, resources?" And so I've, you know, worked with them and made a comment, uh, made comments on Tuesday along the lines of that, you know, we made the, you know, we made those commitments, we had those discussions. I called them today, um, I spoke with some of them, and, um, I think they still strongly believe that we need to put it to a vote, because my concern is, I mean, if it was easy, it's just sane, and it, it can be, right? If, if no one remonstrates against this, if there is no, um, no referendum based on a decision we make to do it without the vote, or to circumvent the voters in this case, my concern has been that, um, that'll be another, um, backfire, if you will, and I don't think we'll get trust of the voters, and I've been trying to garner the trust of the voters personally, and I think the commission has as well for the last five years. So it might be a step backwards, and I don't want to jeopardize our ability to fund the roads in the future by circumventing the voters. And so, um, it was expressed that maybe some of those people have been contacted. I contacted, again, the same people I talked to in twenty-eleven after the Sellwood Bridge, Bridge, uh, vote, uh, or the, the registration fee in Clackamas County, and, you know, they expressly said the same thing they said all along, and expect us to deliver on putting it to a vote. And my fear is, and I might fear, I guess I'll just say it, I mean, they've, they're, they're batting a thousand. Uh, they put that on, on the ballot in twenty-eleven, they put urban renewal on the ballot, and they put light rail on the ballot, and they succeeded in every one of those. And actually, if you read the language very carefully, especially on the urban renewal, and especially on the light rail one, the, basically, the fundamental question that was embedded in there was, "Do the voters want to have a right to vote on expenditures? Do the voters want to have a right to vote on urban renewal?" And the answer was, "Yes." And I concluded that if you ask the voters if they want a right to vote on anything, that they'll say yes. And I think that's what those last two measures demonstrated to me. So, um, uh, I, I don't, I'd like to hear what, or who, perhaps. Commissioner Ludlow, he expressed on Tuesday that he had talked to a couple folks about this, and I, I don't know if that inferred that they were okay with it or not, but not, but it was suggested again, um, that we don't go to a vote. And my fear is that would, the backfire would be so severe that we wouldn't be able to fund any roads for a long time.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you.
Well, actually, we haven't funded any roads in a long time, have we? And, you know, I don't make my decisions based on fear, and you probably don't either. I don't think we should. I think that's called leadership. I calculated out, it's a really complicated calculation. Fifty dollars, um, you know, you'd be spending about a hundred and seventy-five bucks, two years, you know, is, you get two years each time, twenty-five dollars, right?
Twenty-five dollars a year.
So it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars to get five million a year for seven years. That's pretty tremendous, far more than we get now. And, you know, the, the, the one thing that I really remember from the Sellwood Bridge thing, and you may have been the guy saying it, I don't know, I don't quite remember that, is if it was in Clackamas County, I'd support it. And I think that's important, and, and, you know, frankly, I hope those people step up. And I think, uh, I talked to, uh, the newspaper today myself. I said that I appreciated John saying something that I was shocked and surprised to hear him say, because, you know, I think John's learned something. We spent two years and gained two percent approval. Two years, two percent. How much money did we spend to do that? I think we've, um, you know, I'm willing to step up, you know, and, and that's the great thing about the referendum system, that if people don't like it, they can do, they can spend the time to overturn it, and, and that's also a good way. Thankfully, we have that opportunity. opportunity too. So, I look forward to, you know, a vote five-zero behind this effort to resolve a problem that only gets more expensive. Like you said, every year we wait. And so, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, again, I would say that we actually have. I mean, if twenty-five dollars a year is fifty dollars every two years when someone registers a vehicle and that develops five million, was that the number?
Our, our share, yes.
Yeah, our share will be five million. We did something I asked for, for a long time. And actually, this budget cycle, or actually two budget cycles, I asked for, in the budget cycle, to commit five hundred thousand dollars towards roads. And that's not a lot of money. It's not five million. That's five hundred thousand. And, and last budget cycle, I asked for another million towards that of the new revenue that we got. And so, that was 1.5 and staff were able to, by carefully, you know, budgeting, appropriated another three and a half or so million dollars of road funding. That's five million dollars that we did without raising any taxes or fees. So, so if we can continually to do that, that's five million dollars towards the roads that we did last year. So, Commissioner Bernard said, "We haven't done anything." We have. I, I didn't have his vote when it came up for a vote at that time during the budget cycle, but, but fortunately, there were seven people on the Budget Committee that did vote for it. I do want to go back to, you're right, we spent about, oh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on this public outreach program. And as Chair Ludlow accurately said, I believe staff cited that, you know, we moved the needle about two percent. And my comment when we had the consultant out here from DHM, yeah, Davis Hibbits and I forget their last, their last name, they're the M, but when, when they were here, I asked the question, "If we put this on the ballot every year or every cycle, is there any harm or damage to that?" And the answer was, "No, that there wouldn't be." And, but the, the recurring thing out of this is that, geez, after we do, spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we resurvey the folks, the answer is, people don't believe our roads are, are a problem. And, and I might, my, my suggestion, you don't have to follow, my suggestion was, what if we put it on the ballot every year? If we put it on the ballot every cycle and it's in the voter's pamphlet statement and they got to open up on their kitchen table their ballot and they read the voter's pamphlet statement, "Clackamas County has an issue with their roads. We need road funding." And here, and we explain that in the explanatory statement, you know, by, by law and do it and follow the law. We've just touched and contacted directly every voter that opened that pamphlet to read that. And I think that's probably better money spent because I, then they can't, no one can say that, at least the voters can't say, "I didn't know about the roads," because we inform them. And if we had to try once or twice or three times and keep on doing it till we, till we get that message across and demonstrate good stewardship with our dollars that we currently have and continue to do what we can to find money within and appropriate money and prioritize money, tax money, new tax money every year towards this problem and we all chip in, I think we can get it done.
Well, thank you for all the responses. As the gentleman said, it's, it's good that no matter what your thoughts are on this, there's some responses here because as a citizen, I'm not elected, but as a citizen, when I'm out talking with folks, I'm real careful not to speculate or tell them what you're doing. And the more we know what's going on and the direction that you're going, the better it is for the public. And if you do put something out, whatever it may be in terms of, of an action, we know that you won't make an emergency out of it in Salem so that no one can act on it.
Exactly.
That's been a game in Salem that needs to come to an end. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to fill the air on this subject, but I will say this. We've probably gone on long enough in regards to asking the public something. Now, I appreciate the word circumvent used by Commissioner Savis, but regardless of what the consultants may have told him about proposing something every time there's a ballot measure, I have not seen a motion from him or any other commissioner yet in regards to sending something to a ballot. So, we can talk about, about that, but again, the commissioners, I think rightfully, have not made a motion to do that, let alone over and over again. So, we take it seriously when we propose tax measures. And let's not forget specifically here in May, we're asking for a tax measure of which will net us zero dollars. That is the C-800 need. That is to provide modern equipment so that communication can happen between our emergency responders. And it is not happening, happening now. There's a recent article, you can certainly read about that. Now, as far as supporting the voters, especially on what I called the big three the last election, that includes the Sellwood Bridge, it was said over and over again, as Commissioner Bernard said, "If this money was being used in Clackamas County, it'd be a different manner." Well, I assure you that all this money would be used in Clackamas County. As far as urban renewal goes, let's remember this, that in the county, when that passed, it passed huge. In specifically in Sandy, Oregon, over seventy-two percent of the people said, "Yes, we want a vote on urban renewal." Now, when Sandy decided to more than double their urban renewal, they came to us and by a vote of three to two, we voted to support that. I and Commissioner Smith said, "No." Because when something passes with seventy-two percent in Sandy for a countywide urban renewal measures, you would want to believe that those seventy-two percent would like to have a hand in and a vote in on Sandy urban renewal measures. That measure was not taken to the Sandy voters. So, as much as some say they supported that in this county, it should be global, so to speak. If a county that's, and by the way, that city passed it by probably more than any other city in Clackamas County, then they deserved a vote. Yet, that vote never occurred and Sandy was rewarded by a three to two vote on a huge urban renewal district that takes money away from schools, police, fire, library and parks. And that, I have spoken often on that and I will continue to do that. Let's also remember this, that the additional monies that were thrown at roads, I do not agree with the legal decision that allows that. Because simply it says in state law, the ad valorem, and that means property taxes, shall not be used for roads. Now, what is the definition in the state of Oregon of a road? It is the right of way. Yet, a legal opinion came out saying, "Well, we can not put surface down, but we can trim the ditches, trim the trees, put up guardrail, put up stop signs." But again, remember what the definition of a roadway is. It is the complete right of way where they place those signs, those guardrails, where they do that work. So, I don't agree with that decision and I agree that, by golly, if you use it, you should pay. And less of our general funds, which we greatly need for a lot of other purposes. I mean, if I had the choice of roadways or a vulnerable population, including those who have mental difficulties, then I'd take the mental difficulties well over the roads. So, we, we continue to take money away, which I think is illegal, and continue to put it in the roadways, then again, the who benefits is not paying. And I do believe in that. Commissioner Savis?
Well, that's a lot to respond to and I-
You did pretty good yourself.
Well, thanks. Appreciate that. I think it's important to put everything into context and I, you know, I, I don't know how much time you want to spend. I don't really want to go over all that, but I, we were very careful to make sure that whatever we did was legal. And if there's, certainly there's anything illegal we did, I would, I would be challenging that myself. And I don't think we all need to go back less than ten years to realize when we were putting and appropriating all those monies towards the roads, that new fees and administrative costs and a lot of other expenses were now paid for suddenly with gas tax dollars as opposed to county general funds. So, trying to restore those monies back easily could fall within the legal limits. Five billion easily falls within that in a legal fashion. But I do want to go back to the aspect of the funding of roads and respond to what Commissioner Ludlow said. Our, our effort in this, our efforts have been, and again, as I stated, the public is claimed not to be aware of our road condition. And the comment of, of mine or suggestion of mine to put it on the ballot was a way of getting the message out. And so, I want to take, I wasn't planning on doing this, but Mr. Ludlow said, "No one's made a motion."
Chair Ludlow.
Chair Ludlow, fine, fine, Chair Ludlow. So, Chair Ludlow, I make a motion to put road funding measure of some sort on the ballot in May of this year.
Well, you know, one of the first things I, when I came to this commission, I was chastised for is bringing something up without previously advising the commission that it was coming up. I think it's inappropriate that this would happen in the business meeting simply because of somebody's testimony, but I, we'll entertain a second for purposes of discussion. There being none, Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, I mean, you don't come before a board and present a, a vote and not provide any information on what we're really voting on. We haven't even brought the package to the community yet. That would be, that would be crazy. But I, you know, I, one of the things that Commissioner Savis seems, seems to have forgotten is that when we worked in our forests, we got money for roads. A few years ago, we got, you know, money for roads as the, we, the efforts in the forest dwindled. We got less and less and less and less until it was gone. So, it's not like we took that money and put it somewhere else. There was no money. So consequently, the monies for road maintenance is from the state and from the federal forest no longer existed. And so, we've made an effort to try and supplement that where impossible, but like the chair, I would much rather save a life than take money and put it on, on paving roads. Because, you know, digging a ditch, cleaning a ditch alongside a road prevents flooding, trimming the trees prevents accidents, proper signage saves lives. All those things do those things too. So, those dollars spent on those within the, the boundary of the right of way are just as important as paving a road. So, I look forward to someday those monies coming back, but I don't see that happening in the future.
Commissioner Savis?
Just briefly, I think the, I think the financial records and the budget records will prove what actually transpired and what we've done with those dollars over the last ten or fifteen years. So, I'll leave it at that.
As I said, you know, we, it's about time, as Les said, that we do something. I think one of the most important things will come back, because as Jim said, these polls, you know, you only gain a couple percent at a time. And what percent, what's the magic number? It seems as if, and we've sent out ballot measures before, that you best have well into the sixties on approval rating before you send it to the voters. Because when it gets to the voters, there's a lot more people who are polled, if you wish, and, and sometimes it comes out a little bit lower or substantially lower than what you wished it would be. So, we were taking that into consideration. We're contacting the cities to let them know what their share of it might be. I'm sure they have some great excitement about the numbers because they would do them well too. We're all partners in this. As has been said, we have fourteen hundred miles we're responsible for and each year we're down seventeen point five million dollars a year. And that number is growing by probably half a million dollars a year. And sooner or later, it's going to start to show up in our arterials and that's going to affect people's tran, transportation and commute to work and/or play. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that discussion. Thank you, Les, that got, got us into it. And we're going to go on to the agenda and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities Division, for the provision of Oregon Medicaid Administrative Claiming Pilot Services, approval of a sub-recipient agreement, Amendment Number One, with the City of Wilsonville, Wilsonville Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Education, Early Learning Division, to provide early learning hub services. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Southeast 122nd and 132nd Avenue Sidewalk Connection Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services, approval, approving the delegation to Business and Community Services to grant easements over county-owned portions of the Tualatin River and approval of terms of an easement for this purpose. Under the Department of Employee Services, we have approval of labor contract between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Employee Association, approval of a labor contract between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Employee Association for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, approval of labor contract between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Employee Association, temp and part-time, approval of labor contract between Clackamas County and AFSMI, Department of Transportation and Development, and approval of the labor contract between Clackamas County and AFSMI, Water Environment Services. Under Water Environment Services, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Clean Water Services for the acceptance of Class B Bio Solids for beneficial use. We also have a resolution, approval of Clackamas County, approval for Clackamas County Service District Number One to enter a joiner-to-trust agreement for insurance coverage through the Special Districts Association of Oregon, a resolution, approval of, for Tri-City Service District to enter a joiner-to-trust agreement for insurance coverage through the Special District Association of Oregon, a resolution, approval of Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County to enter a joiner-to-trust agreement for insurance coverage through the Special District Association of Oregon, approval of a contract documents between Tri-City Service District and CH-2M Hill Engineers for consulting services related to the Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District Number One Sanitary Sewer System Master Plan, and approval of contract documents between Clackamas County Service District Number One and CH-2M Hill Engineers for consulting services related to the Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District Number One Sanitary Sewer System Master Plan. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners want to pull any items? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion. All right, Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four to zero. I apologize. Mary? Nancy, you've got to fill in. Do you have some stuff for us?
Very quickly. First, nice job on the consent agenda tonight, Mary. That was like, that was a long list I was pulling for you. Just really quickly, we're entering our second year for our Citizens Academy. This has been a very well-received event that we have been taking on and it's a free program. What it does is it gives our citizens the opportunity to learn more about the inner workings of county government. There are twenty-five openings this time. Each month, the academy features classes on county departments and processes. Topics will cover the roles of elected officials, public safety, economic development, just to name a few. Applications will be taken until February 29th. Residents can visit the front page of the county website at www.clackamas.us and click on the Citizen Academy image to find out more and to reply. And I know that the commissioners have been very active with the Citizen Academy and it has been an excellent program. So, I'm happy that we're doing it another year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, communication. Commissioner Bernard?
I'm not sure I want to get into this again, but I'm going to just a little bit about funding for me, road maintenance. When I was mayor of Milwaukee, I think there's another approach and I assume we'll have a hearing on this.
No matter what, no matter what we do, including put on the ballot, they'll have-
We'll have a hearing. So, what we did in the city of Milwaukee at the time is that we knew what we needed, how much money. I mean, it'd be great if we could go for seventeen million, but, you know, that's a tough one. We can't. So, we know that we're going to have to take a little bite out of the pie. And so, we developed three proposed, three funding mechanisms. We took them out to the community and one of them was a utility fee that we charged for parking lots. We negotiated with Safeway, Albertsons and all those, came to an agreement that they, they would agree to. And then, we worked with the rest of the community through public outreach and even the service stations, we had a gas tax. We worked with the service stations, which Milwaukee didn't have a lot of them. But, and when we got to the hearings, which we had two of them, one, only one person showed up. And it was the gas station owner on McLaughlin Boulevard. That was it. No one else showed up. And I think it was all about doing the outreach. And then, of course, if they didn't like it, there could be a referendum, put it on the ballot. And there was none. There was no attempt. Matter of fact, that one gas station in Milwaukee had a petition, which hardly anyone signed, but he also forgot to tell them they had to live in Milwaukee to sign the petition or did- or it didn't mean anything. But it was very successful. If you drive through Milwaukee, Railroad Avenue, which was a disaster as long as I can remember, Monroe Street, Lake Road, Washington Street, Main Street, all those streets have been fixed, thanks to, you know, the support of city council, support of the citizens. It doesn't always have to be a vote. And actually, I remember the company that did the survey, and he said, you'll never win it. You need to make a decision to do this and work to sell this. They never suggested that we would ever be able to turn folks' minds around, but I think there is a process where you can be successful. We were successful in Milwaukee, and I know that Wilsonville and many communities now have funding mechanisms that the citizens support. I mean, drive to Wilsonville, the roads are much better. Matter of fact, I had two pothole calls in the last few weeks, and our transportation department fixed them both yesterday. So, we are getting something done, but we can't continue to fill potholes, because they're the -- pretty soon, the whole road's a pothole. So, I look forward to the hearings and discussions. It sounds to me like we won't get to the five-zero vote, but I'm sure Paul will be open to listening to the folks out there address their concerns about not voting on it or not, or support of it. So, the other thing I have tonight is the dog. One of the things we started recently is, you know, we have some great dogs in our dog shelter, and I think we're doing real good getting them in and out of the door and to the families that need them. And today, we're going to meet Otto, which Paul, you might like, but I know it's misspelt, but Otto, if you need a dog. He's a polite gentleman with a lovely manner. He offers a friendly paw to shake. He walks easily on a leash and sits when asked. His calm nature shows when he rests his head on your lap. Let him be part of your family. You'll be glad you did. For more information about Otto and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Savis.
Well, I was going to speak about something else, but I, like Commissioner Bernard, I'm going to address this a little bit more, and I'm sorry if I brought this up, but Chair, you kind of invited this, that no one had made a motion, so I thought that was an invitation to make one, so. And as Commissioner Bernard expressed on Tuesday, it was suggested, Chair Ludlow, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but suggested that we go and just implement, ideally get a five-zero vote to implement a twenty-five dollar per year vehicle registration fee. And I asked for a clarification, and the clarification, is that five-o vote to put it on the ballot or five-o vote to just do it without putting it to a vote? And it was to put it without a vote. So, that's what I understood, and I think that's what we're talking about now. You know, and we have done our town halls over the last few years. You know, I've been -- we've been approaching, we've had some people come up in town halls, and we talk about road funding. Why don't you just do it? You know, the question's been from a person, why don't you just do it? Don't put it to a vote, just do it. And, you know, I've said, I said, well, you know, there have been people that have committed themselves to, if you do do that, we will remonstrate, we will refer it, and -- but we want to -- we recognize the problem. We want to work with you. We want to solve the problem, but don't just do it. And those people are batting a thousand. They've won every three out of three of the efforts that they have done. So, they're not -- those aren't -- it's not fear. It's common sense, I think. It's common sense that we need to work with those folks and garner their support. And I think they'll help us. With the right approach, I think they'll help us. So, that's my effort. My effort is to do that. It's not a matter of having the fortitude. It's not a matter of having the bravado to do that. This is really a matter of, I don't want to jeopardize, as I said on Tuesday, I don't want to jeopardize or have a setback in which the backfire is so severe and there's no trust of this commission that we can't put anything on the ballot or get anything, any support for anything we do that, and that could harm C-800, that could harm a lot of things that we need in this county. And I've committed myself to garner the trust, and we've made that commitment. Each of us have said that in different forums, that we were committed to that, again, respecting that. Now, if those same folks, if those same folks who said that they would fight this changed their mind, and I heard that today on the phone, and I talked to half of them, some of them, I'd certainly reconsider a five-zero vote with their cooperation. And if we can get there, that's great. That's great. So, I'm not closed. I'm open to that, but I just to, again, you know, just to do it that way without their input. I mean, I heard that there was some reference that discussions had already taken place, and there was acceptance of that, and I would like to know just who, how, who those folks were and where that conversation transpired. So, I'll leave it at that, and we'll continue this discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I haven't really said anything about the roads. Should I or not? I just --
We have a theme going.
We have a theme going. You know, I'm going to keep my powder dry on this one. We met on the Subcommittee of C-4, Impact, and JPAC this week. I'm going to change the subject here. And on the Metropolitan Planning Association side, we talked about affordable housing and had a couple of nice presentations on what we're doing. Metro has taken on the banter of, oh, no, we can't afford to buy houses and we can't afford rent now. And so, they have -- are jumping on the bandwagon with the legislature. The legislature has a bill, ominous housing bill is what it's called. And basically, what it does, it imposes penalties on landlords, no cause evictions for ninety days, can't do this, you can't do that, but, you know, it does not address why we have a shortage of housing. And the shortage of housing is basically because there's not the land to build housing on or the land to build job sites on, and that's what we're fighting here in the tri-county area. And when you refuse, as Metro has done, to expand the urban growth boundaries into areas where we could build affordable housing, you have an artificial shortage of land. And when you have an artificial shortage of land, land prices increase, and it makes it very hard to be able to give housing for our seniors on fixed incomes, our veterans who are disabled, our people with disabilities, and just low-income people. Now, for me, affordable housing is just those groups I mentioned, but, you know, what about the twenty-seven-year-old who's married and wants to buy a house, or a college graduate that's been out a couple of years working and saving their money to buy a house? Those dreams are so beyond their reach. It's not like when some of us graduated, if we worked hard and saved our money, we could acquire something. And that's something that I'm very concerned about is our young people. A lot of them, college graduates that are working, are still living at home. And so, while these solutions, I don't think really address the underlying problem of a land shortage to our housing shortage, at least we'll be talking about it. So, expect some things out of the legislature. I'm not sure if they're really going to help, but that's one of the issues that this commission has been very boisterous on in our dealings with Metro on the urban reserves, the rural reserves, the urban growth boundary expansion, and any land use measures that have come by. And we will continue to be advocates for the people in wanting to control our own destiny when it comes to land use in Clackamas County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As a synopsis of what the commission did this week, we had a briefing on, finally, we hope, the Gladstone Library and how it's coming together, bearing in mind that this is an unusual situation, because Gladstone will be serving the majority of their patrons who live outside of the city limits of Gladstone. That is, technically, they'll be serving all of Oak Grove, Jennings Lodge, as it goes all the way up to Milwaukee. A lot of people to serve, and we're anxious that Gladstone will actually finish this. We talked about the transit room tax and how the great majority, ninety percent of the people who report their income of heads on beds is the transit room tax. Don't know how to fill out the forms, and that's a problem. Because of that, many of them were wrong, but we've embarked on an agreement where we've been trying to educate people on how to properly fill out those forms and report their income. We are the local public health authority, and we were brought a proposal, or at least an FYI, by our Health, Housing, and Human Services Division, talking about tobacco. You know, tobacco is the number-one gateway drug to other drugs. It is number one. And when youth start smoking early, they tend to be smokers all of their lives. In addition to that, now, we have marijuana. And so, the question is, as a public health authority, not the commission, which we are, what can we impose upon retailers to better advertise the dangers of smoking, especially youth? Many of you have probably seen that commercial on TV that shows those very young children, and they're picking up very colorful packages, and they're going, ooh, this smells like bubble gum. This smells like whatever, and all of it was sweet things that appealed to children. And then, it was revealed that everything they were picking up were all tobacco products. That is a grave concern to us and to our health workers and our health leaders, and so we will continue to look at in the future ways to keep tobacco and marijuana, frankly, away from our youth. We had a quarterly budget committee meeting where we talked about the current budget and state of the budget, which is looking good, and talked about our coming budget, where we will start all over again for this next fiscal year of sixteen-seventeen. Talking about dogs, I appreciate Jim mentioning that. You know, very few dogs, probably three to four maximum per year, are ever euthanized through our dog services. They adopt out, and the ones that are euthanized are not adoptable. Be assured of that, because these people are greatly compassionate of those dogs and know that they can place the great, great majority of those dogs. Now, one last thing about the road, without their input. Now, all I did was say, I'll certainly entertain if it was a five-o vote looking at something like that. Nowhere did it say, without public input. Nor did I say that. There'll be a great amount of public input, and for those who don't believe that this commission doesn't react to people testifying, they should go back and watch. People have moved us many times, but what I intend to do is continue to push for taking care of our roads, our responsibility. Now, if that means, as Commissioner Savis has stated, that we should go out every time, I'll have to take that under advisement, and certainly, this board will as well. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1762.33][1762.33][music]